All right, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners work session meeting this August 24th, 2021. We will have our first presentation to present the 2020 Annual Pension Report brought by the Pension Board of Trustees, and I believe we have Mr. Tetero here who will kick off this work session.
Chairwoman, I just want to ask the board patience. He just ran down the hall for one second. He was coming right back.
No problem at all. And you are on.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman. Good morning, fellow commissioners. I'm Roger Tetero. It's my privilege to serve as the chairman of the Cobb County Public Employees Pension Plan, and I'll try to talk to this thing. Y'all can understand me okay, right?
Yes, or you can take it off if no one is near you. It's up to you.
Thank you. And we've got a little PowerPoint that we brought along today. As you know, one of the things we try to do on a roughly annual basis is to appear before the Board of Commissioners and give an update on the current status and performance of the Public Employees Pension Plan. My preference is to kind of walk you through a couple of key slides of key findings, and then if there's any questions, we can either try to answer them in real time or invest some time in getting correct answers for the commissioners going forward. We're also available to talk offline of any issues that come up. So if that's okay, we'll go ahead and jump right in with the first slide. And again, it gives us this general outline that we're honored to join my friends Tony Hagler, Virgil Moon, Bill Volkman, and our Sheriff Craig Owens as the defined members of the Public Employees Pension Plan. We are blessed to have the service of UBS Financial Services as the advisor, and if you look for any secret sauce, and while we generate the returns that we do, it's because of them. SunTrust obviously serves as our trustee, and Kavanaugh McDonald Consultants are the actuaries, and then when needed, Troutman Sanders provides legal advice. On the next slide, I kind of wanted to review what is the charge of the board as laid out, which is that we're responsible for the selection and retention of investment managers, as well as the custodian function for the pension plan and the OPEB or retiree healthcare plan. It's also important to remember that our charge is to invest the assets of the plan in a prudent manner to maintain safety of principle while preserving reasonable returns and avoiding speculative investments. So despite the fact that we try to shy away from very aggressive investments that would put the pension plan at risk, I'm very proud to report the performance that we've had over the past several years. On the next slide, I like to kind of point through, and I'll try to talk in very general terms, and then we can take more focused questions as desired. What drives the performance of the pension plan over time is a couple of factors. First off, the design of the benefit plan, that is how much each employee contributes, how much the county contributes, but those are really the domain of the Board of Commissioners and not of the Board of Trustees, the pension. We try to focus upon the performance of the assets, and that's where I think we have to be held accountable in generating returns comparable to what our peers do on a risk-adjusted basis, of course. And then, of course, what also matters is the compensation of employees, which is, again, the domain of the Board of Commissioners. And I point that out because we do have both employees under the traditional plan and some under the hybrid plan, and obviously, when you change the compensation of your employees at any point in time, that has implications for how well-funded the pension plan will be going forward. For example, if you were to raise salaries across the board, I say 5%, not suggesting that or opining on it, but if you did so, suddenly, the liability that we have with regard to the defined benefit program would go up roughly accordingly. And so over time, when we factor in hiring new employees or increasing their compensation, we have to acknowledge that has an effect upon how well-funded our plan is. And then, of course, the retirement of employees and the mortality of our retirees factors in as well. You know, we certainly want all of our former employees to have long lives, but the truth of the matter is, you know, the mortality of the employees impacts things. And so one of the things we do as a pension plan is periodically we do experience studies to look and see how well the actual retirement patterns and mortality patterns of Cobb County employees line up with those that were assumed in doing the study. So that's why every couple of years, you'll see us do an experience study, and if we've been fortunate enough to have our retirees live longer, then obviously, the expected value of the liability goes up, and you actually become a little bit less well-funded simply because the mortality of the Cobb employees exceeds that of the national average. So let's jump ahead and talk a little bit about what the plans look like. The traditional defined benefit plan is one where there's a service factor of two and a half percent times their base compensation per year. So for example, if you worked 20 years under that program and then you retired, your pension would be 50% of the base over the last several years of your employment. The employees contribute 8.25% of their salary for that, and then we're going to take in 2023, that will move up by another quarter point to 8.75. And again, to put that in a little bit of context, when you take the hybrid plan, which we'll discuss in a second, and the traditional one, and blend it, employees are putting in, on average, about 5.7% of their salary in a given year into the plans. So we had the traditional plan, and again, periodically, there have been changes to it, and we'll allude to an important change in a moment on the traditional plan. But we put in place the hybrid plan, which the next slide shows, which says to Cobb employees, you put a service factor of 1%. So the service factor is lower, but their contribution rate is also lower. So they're putting in 3% for a 1% benefit, where the traditional plan, they're going to be putting in 8.75 for a 2.5% benefit. But in addition to the defined benefit component, there's also a defined contribution component that allows the employees to contribute to a 457 plan as well. That defined benefit part does not apply, or defined contribution part is not relevant for the traditional plan. And so when we roll those two together, as we said, on average, the contribution coming from the employees is about 5.7, and this is what the percentage of liabilities funded looks like. So again, to give us the background on this, the way this is calculated is we take the assets that we currently have in the plan, we make an assumption regarding how much of a return we expect that we will get going forward, and that is one half of the equation. And then the other half of the equation is based upon our assumptions for retirement and mortality, what do we think the actual cost of providing the benefits to the retirees will be? And, you know, we are not thrilled about the fact that we are still below 60% in terms of being funded. We were hoping to get closer to that over time, but the story is pretty simple. We were about 95% funded prior to 1998, and in 1998, the county made a choice to go from a 1.9% service factor to a 2.5% service factor, and they made that retroactively. So that one change essentially reduced the funded, the percentage of funded liabilities from being around 95% down to roughly 70. And so we had another change in the pension back in 2005, '06, '07, and '08, and really, it was more than a change in the pension plan, we had some early retirement incentives. And when you incent employees to retire early, if you don't replace the employees, that can kind of wash out, but if you provide incentives for people to retire early and you replace them with new employees, then it actually will adversely affect how well the pension plan is seen as being funded, and that's the drop that you see in 2005, '06, and '07, coupled with, obviously, a lot of economic volatility during the Great Recession. The good news is this, we did see our funding percentage go up to about 54%, so we've been as low in the past as 50%. We've come back up to 54% over the last year, and we hope that we will continue to see progress on that as we move forward. And I'll comment a little bit on why that will be the case. Let's jump to our next slide if we can. The funded ratio, this shows it to you over the last 10 years, and as you see, we had gotten down to 51.5 in 2019. In 2020, it went up by about three points, which is a very big gain for a single year. Now, why did it increase that much? Well, we're very proud of the fact that we had a really good return over the last year or two in terms of the assets in our portfolio. That helps a lot. But also understand that when we figure out how well-funded our pension is, we use a five-year moving average so that we don't appear to be too vulnerable to one-year fluctuations in asset returns. But even factoring in that moving average, we made great progress last year, but the other half of the story is the county is clearly contributing money on top of what is mandated for what we call the actual cost or normal cost for the employer of the pension, and that is also helping close that gap. So when we look at the next slide, we say, well, where do we go from here? And the red line tells us where we're projected to go in terms of how well-funded we will be, and you'll notice that it says 80% funded by, in 15 years, and in 22 years from now, in 2043, we should be 100% funded. Now, where does that come from? Well, that comes from the assumption that not only do we hit our targets of 7.25% for the asset returns, but also the county is contributing to, is contributing much more than what is actually mandated by the normal cost. And so when we put the kinds of funds in that we've been doing, that closes the gap. We don't have a lot of choice there. We locked in a 30-year amortization for the unfunded liability eight years ago, so that basically puts us in a committed position to continue to make the contributions to have it fully funded at the end of 2043. And then I think that about wraps it up. We may have one more slide or not. Okay, so this just kind of gives us a summary on our performance. The actual assumed percentage change is 7.25%. So that means that when we do the study, we're assuming that our assets will generate 7.25. Now, we've brought that down over time. I think when I first started and was involved with the pension plan around 2014, it was assumed to be about 8%. And like the rest of the nation, we're gradually bringing down the assumed rates of return on assets for a variety of reasons. I mean, we're in a world in which until fairly recently, we had low inflation, which means low nominal yields on fixed income. That's one of the components to it. So we think that we made a step toward being a little more cautious by making a more modest assumption about asset performance going forward. If you look over the last three years, five years, and seven years, you would see our plan has actually exceeded that 7.25 by a pretty strong margin. And on that point, I wanted to show on the next slide how well we have performed over these look-back periods. So this is looking at one year, three year, five year, and 10 years, end of calendar year, 2020. And you'll notice that in all of those four different look-back periods, our pension plan not only outperformed the policy index, which says, given the breakdown between fixed income and equity, what should you do, but it outperformed our mean peers by a healthy margin, and we were actually ranked number one among our, or first percentile among our peer groups in terms of asset performance. So I don't think we can ask much more out of our investment team in terms of what we're doing in terms of generating asset performance, and so our steady progress back toward being fully funded will, of course, continue, but over a long period of time. That hopefully gives you a little snapshot of where we are. If we've got technical questions, we've got our whole, some of our team here, and then we can obviously come back to the commissioners at a later date with written responses as needed.
That was a lot in 13 minutes. I appreciate that robust presentation. Do any commissioners have any questions? Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Great presentation as well for me. My question is, do you have any recommendations based upon what you've seen, anything?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Richardson. I try to stay in my box, which is as a member of the Board of Trustees, to provide our duty over the assets in generating an appropriate risk-adjusted return. I certainly think that it's fair to constantly ask, you know, what is the burden upon the county of making the progress toward being fully funded? And I may have personal opinions, but I don't, I would prefer not to speak on behalf of the pension plan on what is my individual opinion.
Understood. Thank you.
I have some questions, and just trying to understand some of your statements with what I saw on the screen. If we can go back to the last slide. Okay, I'm sorry, continue to go backwards. In this, that last slide that we just saw, in this slide here, you were speaking about a three-year or five-year smoothing for the average. So when you look at the next slide, this three-year, five-year, and seven-years, is that based on you averaging years because your annual performance was 19%?
Right. These, this would be, for example, 11.58 would be the actual performance over the three-year period. For purposes of calculating, are we well-funded or what is our percentage funded, we try to use the five-year average because we're trying to take out the effects of a one-year shock. And we show how vulnerable that can be. We showed you December 31, 20 numbers, and it showed us being up a nice return, let's take a peek, I think it was 19%. Had we showed you instead the 12 months that ended in March of this year, it would have showed you up over 40% because, of course, that March-to-March window would have been the most favorable one, looking at asset performance, because the equity markets bottomed out in the third week of March 2020.
Okay. And if we could go back a couple of slides ahead, this, I'm sorry, go back to the last, yes, this one here, and you provide a steep, or the chart provides a steeper increase between 25 and 35, and then from 35 to 43. You said based on contributions that the county has been making?
Yeah, it's a couple of things. I mean, one, we would expect that because returns tend to compound on each other, it would not necessarily be a linear line with regard to the projection. The county's actual contributions is roughly about eight, I think it's 18.3%, which of that, about five, let's see, about eyeballing it, about 5.26 would be what we call the normal contribution, that is, if we did not have an unfunded liability, how much would the county be putting in? But the annual cost to help amortize that unfunded liability over 22 years ends up adding nearly 11% contribution to that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, do commissioners have any other questions? We're good? Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you for your service to the county.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to our next work session presentation, which is to have an update regarding economic development initiatives, the comprehensive plan, and short-term rentals.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jessica Wayne, Community Development Agency Director, and I just appreciate the opportunity this afternoon to update you all on a few initiatives of community development. We have a number of slides, but we'll try to go through them pretty quickly and try to save some time for your questions. I know that you all have a heavy agenda today and also this evening. So to start out, Jason Gaines and Marcellus Williams are going to come up and speak a little bit about the economic development incentives and initiatives that we currently have, as well as sharing some ideas for perhaps where we could get, and again, an opportunity to hear from you all will be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, commissioners, Madam Chair, County Manager. As Jessica mentioned, we are going to give you a brief overview of the county's economic development incentive programs, talk a little bit about what we've done, what we've accomplished, and where ideas that we have as far as where we can go in the future. Next slide, please. All right, just a quick overview of our mission and visions. They're on the screen for you. I won't read it, but that just is kind of the baseline premise for what we do, and a lot of it, as economic development programs in the county have been revamped over the last few years, is really focused on businesses of all sizes, but particularly with an emphasis on small business. Next slide, please. Okay. So again, what do we do? Small business assistance, helping small business owners and businesses of all sizes navigate the permitting and licensing processes administered by community development, working with our friends at the Chamber and Select Cobb with site location, and providing incentives to help lure new companies to our jurisdiction, our county, as well as helping existing companies who desire to expand do so, helping businesses achieve resources or acquire resources for workforce recruitment, workforce retention, and fostering partnerships with our various economic development partners throughout the region, including at the state level, the regional level, utility companies, and the like. Next slide, please. Okay. So a lot of times, we run into some confusion about what our role in the economic development process is versus that of Select Cobb at the Chamber. So that's just a quick side-by-side comparison, as you can see, and I'll refer to it constantly throughout this presentation. A lot of what we do is assisting small business, as well as helping to provide the incentive packages to help new companies locate in our area and help existing ones expand. On Select Cobb's side, they have more of the direct contact with the site selectors, whether it's firms that have been retained by the companies looking to locate, or if it's the State Office of Economic Development who may be working with those site selectors. So a lot of what they do is more focused on that and helping to reel in the big fish, so to speak. Next slide, please. Okay. So a brief history of our existence. Our existence as it is today came about in early 2018, when the division was relocated from the Finance Department to Community Development. So that was an organizational change, as well as a physical move from this building out to our building on Powder Springs Road. Later that year, the Board of Commissioners adopted a new suite of incentives per revision to the Economic Development Chapter of Dakota ordinances. About a year later, we updated those incentives, and then later in 2019, the first incentives of one of our big programs, our Innovation Fund and our Entrepreneurship and Innovation Program, that's when the first recipient of funds from that program was awarded those. And you'll hear more about that program and others here from Marcellus here in a minute. I'm actually going to go ahead and turn it over to Marcellus now to tell you a little bit more about where we stand currently.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Chairwoman. Next slide, please. So currently, we have been supporting new businesses navigating the county's process for starting a business in the county. Our concierge office, we help businesses get started with their business license, help them navigate in the building permitting process. Along with that, to piggyback on what Jason was saying...
I'm sorry, Marcellus, I'm having a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We just had the fan blowing as well. Just thought that may help.
Okay. Sorry about that.
All right.
To piggyback on what Jason was saying, we also assist Select Cobb with any projects they have on the economic development pipeline, too. And then the big thing that we do as an office is that we administer the county's incentives program. Next slide, please. So here's a list of some of the incentives that we offer as a county. I'm just going to talk briefly about each one. The first is Entrepreneurship and Innovation Grant, which is an incentive that we give to small businesses and entrepreneurs who have innovative ideas about creating jobs and creating a business here in Cobb County. They can receive up to $10,000 from a grant that's provided from the Development Authority. The next incentive is the Small Business and New Start Incentive. It's not really an incentive financially. It's essentially what we do as a business concierge team, what we, the services that we provide for free in the county's office, so helping companies navigate in the building permitting process, helping companies get started acquiring a business license, helping them find locations that they might be interested in as far as a new facility or getting started with their business. The next incentive after that is our Business Retention Incentive. That incentive is for any company that's desiring to expand in Cobb County that has at least 50 employees and has been in the county for three, excuse me, two or more years. After that, we have our targeted, our Target Industry Incentive. That's for a company that's interested in coming to Cobb County that's a part of certain growth clusters. For example, I won't list them all, but there's eight of them, Life Sciences, Research and Development, aerospace, or advanced manufacturing companies that are interested in coming to Cobb County that provide 20, that add 25 or more employees to the county and bring an estimated fiscal impact of over $250,000, they would be eligible for that incentive. After that, we have our Special Economic Impact Incentive for companies that are interested in coming to Cobb County that add 150 new jobs or more, or, and, excuse me, bring, invest over $30 million into our county, and that's essentially for companies that might be bringing the corporate headquarters to Cobb County. For example, Tyson Crump, when they came here back in 2018. We also have our Commercial Industrial Rehab Incentive. This program is to encourage owners of commercial-use buildings or industrial property that's over 20, 20 years or more in age in select areas. Some of you might know that's part of our redevelopment inventory. Those properties are eligible for this particular incentive. And then finally, finally, we have our Enterprise Zone Incentive, which is for, an enterprise zone is an area designated by our local government for redevelopment, and businesses in that area are eligible for incentive. The main incentive there is a 10-year graduated tax abatement. And there's one more that's not on the slide, as a facade improvement grant that we provide to businesses as well. So thank you for going to the next slide. And here's just some highlights of some of the successes that we've had in the county in the past couple of years, actually, in the past three years, and I won't list all of them, but that's just some of our current successes that we've had since 2018, since our new incentives were approved by the board. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jason.
Marcellus, just for clarification, when you have the building permit fees, this is the cost that's been waived when the business comes in?
Right. What we have listed for, that's the amount of savings that companies that have received that incentive have earned through waiver of building permit fees. Next slide, please. All right, so you heard a little bit about our background and where we are currently, and let's talk a little bit about where we can go. We want to identify ourselves as the one-stop shop for small business, and you've got a lot of people working in the small business space out here these days. You've got a lot of local business associations throughout the county. You've got, you know, your Small Business Development Center, you know, running out of University of Georgia. You've got Small Business Incubators. We had the pleasure of having NiHQ here a few years ago. Unfortunately, that operation didn't pan out and had to close, and we've been longing for a new incubator to surface here in the county, but, you know, in the meantime, we want to kind of fill that gap, and we kind of want to partner with those other entities that I mentioned to kind of, you know, essentially have everybody funnel towards the services that we offer and we provide. And of course, we can only work in an incorporated Cobb, but that also includes working with the cities as well so that, you know, small business startups and entrepreneurs know that if they're located within one of the six municipalities, that they've, they've got resources that they can go to in each of those six municipalities as well. So a lot of those resources involve marketing and promotion, entrepreneurial education and training, again, Small Business Development Center, as well as several, you know, private small business coaches that are out there. We want to be able to kind of link people who need that assistance and want that assistance with those people. Financial incentives for existing small businesses. You heard Marcellus mention that our concierge service, which is kind of listed as one of our incentives, is not an incentive so much from a financial standpoint, and we've done some research on what other localities are doing in that space to help further incentivize small businesses to come in for assistance. One of the things that they have actually done in a lot of what we found is offer, you know, discounts or waivers of business license fees over a shortened period of time, and only offering it to a certain number of businesses that meet certain qualifications. That's something that we've researched, that's something that we'd love to talk with you all more about. That's something that we'd love to talk with you all more about offline. But for the sake of brevity, we'll just go ahead and move through this. And of course, if you have questions on that, we're open. And then, again, like I said, and we've mentioned constantly, developing relationships with the local partners. Next slide. Okay. So, how do we get there? All right. Funding priorities. And that's where, you know, us expressing these ideas and concepts to you all, as well as you all sharing your ideas with us, we kind of help, help create the platform, so to speak, for which, you know, funding priorities of this board, you know, could potentially go. So, you know, if there's something that, you know, you all as a board feel strongly about, and it's something that, you know, you know, we've talked about and informed you of and have helped to champion, you know, that's something that, you know, we would hope that you all would consider as, you know, a funding priority to help, you know, further the overall mission and vision that you all saw on the first slide. Next point, partnership opportunities. Can't speak about it enough. We can't operate in this space alone, and there's so many people working in this space that, you know, we want to have open dialogue and communication with these partners so that we know that we can go to each other for certain things and make sure that the people who need and want to grow in business can do so. Next point, outreach and engagement. Working with Select Cobb in the Chamber, prior to the pandemic, we started a Small Business Walks program where we went out to businesses in each of the commission districts to get feedback on what it is they would like to see Cobb County do in the economic development space as well as, you know, the Chamber and Select Cobb. We hope to continue that program here in the fall, you know, COVID permitting. And then there's other things that we'd like to do as well. At one point in time, our office produced a survey of small businesses. We maintain a contact list or a log of everybody who we deal with, and we want to be able to reach out to those people and get feedback through surveys. And at one time, this office did that, but there wasn't really a lot of response to the surveys when they went out. So, we want to reintroduce that. And I think that becomes even more important now in, in this age of COVID that we're living in. And I know that last year, surveying and getting feedback from people is what led to the CARES Act grants that were funded through the $50 million that was provided by this board and administered by Select Cobb. So, more of that type of engagement, as well as even a regular newsletter, small business newsletter that would go out to our contacts, as well as anybody who was interested in subscribing. Those are some of the things we're looking at. And the next point, evaluating that feedback, constant review and evaluation and brainstorming new ideas on how to reach those who we need to reach. And the final point, again, continue outreach, just getting out there, pressing the flesh as much as we can, showing up on Zoom meetings, engaging with as many of our community partners as we can in, in any means and by any means that we can. So, with that, we'll conclude our presentation. We thank you for your time and attention, and if you have questions, we'd love to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, yes, Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. Jason, have we ever reached out to or partnered with the Small Business Development Center at KSU?
Yes, yes. We, we interface with them regularly, in fact. And Drew Tomsmier, who runs that office up there at the KSU location, is a regular contact of ours. We probably don't talk quite as much as we should, but, you know, we do have, he's a regular participant in our quarterly roundtable meetings, and he's constantly sending us information for us to distribute to our, our economic development partners through our, you know, email distribution lists and things like that. So, we do interface with them quite a bit. Probably could do so more, but that, that relationship is there.
And for our small business outreach, I would think we would want to be in close contact with all the dozen business associations throughout the county, geographically located in all the districts.
Absolutely. And we.
And cities.
Yes. And we had actually moved back into that for a while earlier this year, but I had a position go empty and vacant almost as soon as I filled it, and I'm looking to refill that position and put that individual once hired back on that particular task of getting out to all the business associations and making those contacts. And, you know, I go to meetings when I can, but as you know, I'm managing two divisions, so I get stretched a bit.
Okay. And then, one other question. When will we be seeing an updated redevelopment list for the county?
By the end of this year. Yeah. We're actually working on that in addition to several other things. But yes, I believe by the end of this year, we'll have an updated list, probably sooner, but I can guarantee you by the end of this calendar year.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Marcellus.
Yes, Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you very much. What are some of the high-level goals that we have? So, I see, for instance, partnership opportunities as an activity. How many partners? Which type of partners? How can we be assisting in that area? What are the goals assigned to it? Or when we say outreach, how many businesses? What are some of those goals?
Well, those aren't necessarily goals that we have written down, but from a high-level standpoint, the partners, we're talking about, as Commissioner Burrow mentioned, the business associations. We're talking about, you know, other people who are in the business of helping small business, like, you know, the business coaches and things like that, Small Business Development Center, the cities, you know, pretty much everybody who comes to the table. We have regular quarterly Economic Development Roundtable Meetings, and our next one is actually this coming Friday. If you're available, I'd love for you to come out and kind of see what we do and what we talk about. And that might help give you a better idea of the type of partnerships that we're forging and that we're talking about continuing to build upon. But, and then I know that I've, I've had some kind, some communication with your cabinet member who's over Economic Development and Small Business, and we kind of talked about some of the same things that you saw here in this presentation. So, you know, he's all on board with that and ready to participate and assist in any way he can.
Ready to serve. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
Hi, Jason. This question goes back to the Enterprise Zone application that we approved a couple weeks ago. Because I know when I spoke with you, you know, you had pretty much told me it had been approved by a previous board, and so I was like, okay. But then I thought the MDJ raised a couple good questions of, you know, how do we know what impact it's going to have? Because I guess they called and asked those questions. So, how do we know this is going to have a positive economic development impact if we don't know those answers?
Well, what I mentioned, as far as it being approved by a previous board, was the actual ordinance establishing the Enterprise Zone Program. I was referring to that specifically, not this particular project. And as far as the project is concerned, the impact, the models that we run are based on values assigned to parcels currently in the system. And these parcels that are in the system that were associated with this project are not currently on a tax roll. They're all publicly owned, so they are generating zero in tax revenue. And what the graduated abatement schedule does, it allows, you know, an initial 100% tax abatement for the first five years, and then it graduates up to where by year 11, those tax, those parcels are fully taxable, and that's just property tax. It doesn't include any other taxes that could be generated by any business that would locate in these facilities. And with this particular project, it's in the city of Powder Springs, so, you know, the things like excise tax and hotel motel and whatnot, well, hotel motel would, you know, come to the county, but this particular project was going to be apartments and retail. So, any of those taxes outside of property would go directly to the city anyway. And then, when it comes to the property taxes split between the city and the county, they get, everybody gets their piece of what they're supposed to get. So, the city had to actually pass the Enterprise Zone Incentive for this project for it to get that, that, that tax break as well. So, it's a joint effort in that sense, but as far as the impact, you know, it, it was going to be difficult to determine it since there's no impact right now with those properties since they're not on the tax roll. If that makes sense.
So, I don't know all the properties that are included in this incentive piece, but are they typically properties that are currently not on the tax roll? And we're looking to.
This is, this, this, for that, for the one that you're speaking of, it was the first that had been applied for in that particular enterprise zone, that geographic enterprise zone. And, you know, there are other, obviously, there are many other properties, most of which are not publicly owned, so we don't really have a baseline for that. With this being the first one, you know, you know, the, the initial impact, you know, could only be seen as positive because there was, there wasn't anything on the tax roll to begin with.
Jason, what qualifies parcels to be in an enterprise zone?
Whether they're physically located in the area, it's geography.
Yes. And what character quality would that, would those parcels have to have?
Well, the areas as a whole are based on, you know, a desire to improve economic conditions, you know, whether we're talking about physical blight, disinvestment, underperformance, you know, lack of achieving best and highest use. Those types of things are what, are, that's what's used to qualify.
So, these are typically. These are typically under-invested in areas.
Generally, yes.
Yes. So, hoping with the enterprise zone that you'll be able to infuse that area by bringing in new development and that abatement of taxes would encourage that development, which would then be a catalyst for that area.
Yes. It's a good description, yes.
Yes, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. It, it is a geographical area, but there are also factors that are included as far as the income levels and population and things like that that determine if it's eligible to be in an enterprise zone. Like, on Canton Road, where most of my redevelopment sites were when this was, the list was developed back in 2012, 13. Everything south of Piedmont Road and Canton intersection on both sides now are enterprise, located in an enterprise zone.
Yes.
And there's some in District Four as well, that Veterans Memorial, other areas that are categorized in an enterprise zone.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. I hope that you can share that with commissioners. I appreciated the data for the incentive programs. One thing, I don't know if it was in the chart, is to see the numbers also going through the Business Concierge Service, if we have.
We didn't include that in the, the table, but, you know, Marcellus keeps that log. I don't know if you know the number off the top of your head, if you do.
This year, we've helped up to, excuse me, this year, we've helped up to 75 businesses. Just assisted them this year. Last year, it was around 100. The year before that was 115.
Okay, good. And with the group that you have, is there, I presume that's a sounding board for some of our programs that you meet with quarterly?
Yes.
Okay. So, hopefully provide you some feedback on what we're doing. Every time I go out and speak, I do talk about that service because a lot of times when, at least as a commissioner, when I heard from a business, it was because they ran into an issue that could have been possibly addressed if they would have participated in that. I appreciate your initiatives. The, the question you had around funding or funding priorities, is this something that's going to be included in the budget presentation? You talked about five goals as far as some of your initiatives.
Right. Five ways for us to get to where we want to go. Yeah, the funding priorities, that is something that I believe we'll be open for discussion, you know, as we prepare the next biennial. Now, we had one meeting internally about, you know, budgeting for the next two-year cycle, and that is something that we, you know, put in, included for your consideration. So, you'll, you'll see it, you know, at that, the time that it gets presented.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Next up, we have a work session, at least in my book, let me know if I'm getting ahead. Is this the Comprehensive Plan update? You're doing the same. You're going to be up there again for that presentation?
Yes, you're stuck with me. You're stuck with me for a few more minutes.
All right. That'll work.
All right. So, we wanted to take an opportunity to talk a little bit about the update to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Real high level, before we get into it, we're mandated by the state to update our Comprehensive Plan in five-year intervals. And, you know, this 2040 plan, the Horizon Year 2040, was initially adopted by the board in 2017. So, our, our five-year update cycle has begun, and that, that update is due to the State Department of Community Affairs in October of next year. So, we wanted to come today and give you a brief overview of, first, what is a Comprehensive Plan as a kind of a baseline, and then talk a little bit more about what we intend to do with this five-year update in terms of the actual work of staff and the community engagement piece, which is, of course, critical and essential to the development of the Comprehensive Plan. All right. So, let's establish the baseline here in the Georgia Planning Act of 1989, which is what enables comprehensive planning at the local level, every city and every county statewide. It's the foundation for regional planning, authorizes the power, and just as a note, it does not limit or compromise zoning power. A lot of people conflate zoning and comprehensive planning, future land use. They are not one in the same. They work together. One is a policy tool, the other is a regulatory tool, but they work together. And, you know, I just wanted to kind of make that distinction as part of, you know, the baseline as far as what we do. Okay. Department of Community Affairs Minimum Standards. Those standards are, are the baseline for what every jurisdiction in the state is required to have in their Comprehensive Plan, and it's established, it's established in different levels or tiers. So, your smaller, more rural counties in South Georgia have fewer and less stringent standards than your major metropolitan counties, just kind of a simple comparison. Then there's also the Qualified Local Government status, and that is very important because having a Comprehensive Plan that satisfies the minimum planning standards is the key to having your QLG status. And QLG, it is, it in itself is a gateway to making, you know, your city or your county eligible for various grant fund and loan programs. The ones that are, I have a list here in front of me, and it's pretty extensive. Many of the programs on this list aren't ones that Cobb County participates in, but Home and CDBG are two essential ones that are included on this list. So, if you don't have your QLG status, or if you're not in good QLG standing, you're not eligible for those programs, as well as several others on this list. Some other ones of note include AmeriCorps, Emergency Solutions, ONE Georgia, State Housing Trust Fund, so on and so forth. So, having that QLG status is essential to most local governments to be able to operate and, and serve their citizens. Next slide, please. Okay. So, this is a quick little overview of the history of DCA's Minimum Planning Standards. So, prior to 2012, with our 2007 Comp Plan, which had a Horizon Year of 2030, that was under the, those standards identified by the green box, broken up into three deliverables, pretty time and labor extensive, required five-year interval updates, but then major updates every 10 years. In 2014, the standards were revised to streamline the deliverable and be more flexible. It requires only five-year updates, took out the 10-year major update. So, our current 2040 Comp Plan that was originally adopted in 2017 is under those standards identified by the purple box. And then, in the teal-colored box, 2017, right before we had the, the current Comp Plan adopted, the standards were revised again to add a broadband service element. Just from my viewpoint, that is something that was really geared more towards expanding broadband in rural communities. We actually have an element in our Comp Plan that kind of covers a little bit of that, but we actually have to have that particular element in our Comp Plan going forward. So, we will be adding that element to the, the plan through this five-year update process. Okay. So, we have three core elements. This is just kind of an overview of the elements and fill up. And Philip Westbrook from the Planning Division is going to come and talk to you more about specifics. But you have three core elements that every comprehensive plan has to have. Then you've got some required elements that are based on the tier. Again, the size and scope of your county, small rural area versus large metropolitan area. And then you've got other optional elements that aren't required of anyone. And I can tell you that when you see these next group of slides, you'll see that we have many optional elements that cover a lot of what impacts day-to-day life for our citizens here in Cobb. Then you've got the community involvement piece, again, critical to any planning process, identifying stakeholders, public participation techniques and their execution, actually executing the program itself, and then documenting what you get out of that public engagement process. We do all of that through, through this comprehensive plan update. And then we also, of course, consider our regional water planning, environmental planning criteria, which is, just, just being good stewards of, of the resources that we have. So, with that, I'll bring Philip Westbrook up, and he's going to go in-depth into the, the elements as well as the plan process, including the public participation piece.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and, well, she's not here, County Manager, for giving this opportunity to share with you our update strategy for updating our comprehensive plan. I'm going to try to be brief and quick, but very informative. So, so we're going to start off with what is our comprehensive plan. It's a guide for local government. It's a vision. It provides a growth strategy. It's a policy guidance, or, or provides policy guidance, not only just land use, but other elements in the plan. And it obviously, it, well, as Jason mentioned, it updates every five years according to the current standards. How can it be used? The biggest thing here, it, it provides a reference, not just to staff, but also to the community itself. It provides expectations from both a community standpoint and from a development standpoint. A, a community member might be looking, or a potential community member might be looking to move into the county and want to know what the adjacent land use is and, or what it could be. So, the comprehensive plan can provide that reference and that expectation of what could potentially be adjacent to their property. And of course, a developer could be utilizing the land use plan as to identify certain areas where they could look to build their development. And it also provides a five-year work program, a community, a community work program that identifies projects. These are individual projects that could be done over the next five years to reach the vision that is described in, in the comprehensive plan. Now, I'm going to get into the framework plan and, and talk a little bit about how we are strategizing to update this comprehensive plan. First, to give you a little sense, just like the comprehensive plan is a guide, this framework plan is a guide for staff and all participants to guide us through the update process. It sets, it, it provides background information as far as, as Jason mentioned, state mandates. And also, it provides us, gives us structure and, and organization on how our current plan is developed. Therefore, we have an understanding of what needs to be updated and how we plan to update that once we kind of have an understanding of the way our current plan is set up. And of course, it would not be a framework plan without a strategy and community engagement and timelines and so forth to help guide through us, guide us through that update process. Alright, and speaking a little bit about how our current plan is structured, there's really two types of elements. There's the planning element, and the planning elements can be required or optional elements. And then there's, these are the quality life elements that are good to have in our Comp Plan that make a community successful. The core elements is absolutely required by DCA or by the state. They include the community needs and opportunities, the community goals, and the community work program. Each one of our planning elements, so that we have 12 of them, and each one of them include the core elements. For example, land use is a required planning element, and it includes the core elements of the need. There's a set of land use needs, a set of land use goals, and a set of land use work program items. Kind of give you a better visual, this graphic here can, shows you a little bit about how the planning elements interact with the core elements. The, the outer ring of, of this circle include our planning elements, and they all contain their own core elements, which make up the, the heart of the plan, really. Those core elements, we would not have a comprehensive plan if we did not have those core elements. Okay, so, this table here shows us what is required for Cobb County, and obviously, we have our optional elements, not necessarily required, but we include them in, in our comprehensive plan because the community has, has seen them to be a good fit for, for, for planning in Cobb. The required elements, land use is required because we do have a zoning ordinance that regulates our, our zoning, our land use, so we are required to have a land use element. Transportation, we are part of the Atlanta MPO, or the Metropolitan Planning Organization, so we are required to have a transportation element. And then housing, we do receive funding, CDBG funding, so we are required to have a housing element. And then, of course, as Jason talked about, the broadband element, that is a new element, and it is currently not in our plan. So, we'll need to make sure that we include some needs, community goals, and a work program list for our broadband element. And then the optional elements you see there, again, they're optional. They don't have to be in our plan. Again, we've included them. It's quite an extensive list there, and we're going to look to streamline this, this list of optional elements and sort of, we do have a supplemental plan section in our comprehensive plan. So, if there is an element that contains a, a, a sort of a master plan that looks after that particular element, then we'll probably include that as a supplemental plan instead of having its own element. Okay, now, so we provided a little bit of background information. Now, we're going to get into the process. There's a lot of work in between these bullet points you see here, but this is a very brief, brief overview of the process. And we'll get started with our kickoff meeting. That is, again, required by the state. To kick, to kick off the project, that's when we'll come to the Board, and we'll let the community know that we are initiating this project and that we'll provide them dates, times, locations of when they can get involved. Most of our time and effort and resources will be in the plan development phase. That will commence after our kickoff meeting. In fact, some of it's already started, research and data collection. That's when we really get into community engagement and start getting that feedback from the community. And then toward the end of that plan development phase, we'll have a updated draft. And then that's where public hearing number two comes in. We will come back to the Board, let the, let the community know the findings that we've come up with. Let, give, give them an opportunity to give us feedback on the final draft. And then we'll also ask the Board to, for authority to submit the plan back to the state for review. And that's where the submit for review part comes from. They will have, when I say state, the ARC, the Atlanta Regional Commission, and the, they will transmit the plan to DCA, and then they will review it from a minimum, minimum, minimum standards point of view. If all goes well, we can just move forward. If we get a report of findings, everything's good, we can move through the adoption phase of the project. If we get information back saying that we have not met the minimum standards, then we'll have to meet those standards and then resubmit and go through this process again. From experience, I can tell you, five years ago, when we updated our 10-year comprehensive plan, which was a much more holistic look, really, an, an over, an overhaul of our comprehensive plan, we submitted one time, got it right the first time, and was able to move forward with adoption. This, again, provides us a graphic of, of that process. We are looking at our first kickoff meeting in October, and then we'll start our plan development phase, which will move through, which will carry us through the, really, the entire project. And then spring of next year, we'll look at coming back to the Board to submit our draft update to the state. And if you'll notice, Items Four and Five here, that is really the submittal process, the revision process. That's the, when I, the state review process. I can tell you that it probably will not take that long, but tho, that, those, that time is built in for us, really. If there's any hiccups at the beginning of this project, we've got some time built in in the back of the project to work through those. Okay, so what is our focus? We talked about the needs and community work program. There are three items on here that, that the state requires us to update every five years. That's the needs and opportunities, the community work program, and the land use element. The land use element has to be updated every five years, but I can tell you, that's really not a big deal for us. If you guys are familiar with the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, we update our land use element every year. So, that's really a standard operating procedure for us. The needs and opportunities, that's going to be heavily involved in, in community engagement. We'll look to update and revise those needs. The community work program, there's really two sections of our community work program. There's the community work program that, that exists today, and we will need to do a status report on those projects, and that's our report of accomplishments. We'll provide that status report, and then we'll also have to set up a new five-year work program for the next five years. So, that's part of that update. And again, I talked about the broadband element. Our transportation doesn't have to be updated this five years. It's updated at local discretion. But you all know that we're in the process, or DOT's in the process of our comprehensive transportation plan. So, we're going to look to integrate and use that plan as reference into our comprehensive plan. We're not going to reinvent the wheel when it comes to, we're not transportation expert. We don't have that professional knowledge, so we're going to utilize their, their plan as reference. And then if there are any needs that, that are just drastic, that don't fit within our community goals that we have listed right now, we'll, we'll revise our goals as well. And again, the DCA does not require us to update the community goals on a five-year period. They're, they're done at a local discretion. And so, how do we approach this? We've got a three-team approach. We've got the project management team, which will be made up of staff from different departments that will help out and assist community development in this plan. We have a stakeholder committee that will, we will need to form. And I can tell you that in the past, the Board of Commissioners have appointed stakeholder members for this, and you will likely be getting some information from us about some appointees on forming that diverse group. And then we have the community, obviously, will be an important part of our planning team. Meetings, project management team meetings, we're roughly looking at four. Looking to basically go over formatting duties. Again, they're going to assist us through the community meetings and provide us with their expertise in their field of work and help us ensure that a lot of the comments and the needs that we receive are realistic and achievable. Again, the stakeholder committee, we're looking at two meetings with the stakeholder committee, as well as one-on-one interviews. These, these stakeholder members will be champions of the project. They will be utilized to, to send out, to be outreach, to get folks involved. They also will provide valuable input at the initial stage of the project and before we go out into the community. And then at the end of our community engagement, our, our meetings that we will have, they will also have an opportunity to provide feedback on the comments that we received from the community. So, that brings us to the, 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 the community meetings. When we include the three public hearings, by the way, two of these public hearings, well, really, all three are required. But the kickoff meeting and the pre-submittal meeting is definitely required, and of course, we have to have it adopted, so that's required too. But the six, six community meetings, we're looking at, starting out with the one virtual meeting, and I will say that, I say, we will have one virtual meeting planned. There is the possibility, we will be ready to go virtual at any moment. So, if one of these in-person meetings just doesn't work out, we will be ready to have our virtual meetings. But we're looking at one per district, and then an open house to sort of summarize all the findings and have the community have one last look at what we received from the entire community. And again, this is just a graphic, again, showing our community engagement timeline. You can see that it's extremely aggressive on the front end. And we have, you know, October being the kickoff, November being our first virtual hearing. Likely, December, early December will be our first community meeting, and then we'll have two community meetings in January. And then there will also have, our online engagement will carry us throughout the entire project. There will be 24-hour, obviously, access to, to engagement. There will be interactive tools, different formats to, to receive comments and, and to see, to get feedback from the community. And then, all that time in the back end, that's, we're not anticipating a smooth process, never is. And so, a lot of that time on the back end is, is dedicated to any issues that we, that comes about. And then, of course, drop dead deadline, October 31st, 2022, that's when our QLG status expires, and we'll have to have an adopted plan before then, so. And I'm going to turn it back over to Jason. Thank you for your time. Look forward to working with each and every one of you through this process, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Philip. Alright, thanks, Philip. And I'd like to clarify one point about the stakeholder committee. It, it may come out kind of awkward, but when it comes to the stakeholder committee staff, we will be coming to each of you seeking nominees for that stakeholder committee. And the details and the parameters of what we're looking for will include that. We'll, we'll, we'll probably send out a memo and then try to meet with each of you individually to talk about members of that stakeholder committee. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. We're not dictating the stakeholders to you all. You all, we're going to come to you and seek that information from you. So, you've seen multiple timelines here in this presentation. This is, this one that you're seeing here on the final slide is kind of a, an overview that encompasses the entire project and all of its steps. Thus far, up to this point, we have completed the framework plan that kind of creates the guidance for how we'll conduct this process, and we are wrapping up this presentation here to you all today. Other activities in process are forming the project management team, which consists of internal staff, collecting additional data and working on the report of accomplishments. Next step, so to create a project website, seek feedback from you all on stakeholder committee members, have the first public hearing, which we are tentatively scheduling for October, and kicking off our community engagement program per the aggressive schedule that Philip showed you all. And one more thing I want to say before we close out. You know, Philip and the Planning Division team work really hard on this. They do, they do yeoman's work on this effort. And a lot of what you see in this, other cities and counties hire consultants to do. And we do it all in-house. We've been doing it all in-house since at least 2007, which was the first comprehensive plan that I was involved with during my time here at Cobb County. And I can tell you all by looking at comprehensive plan documents from other jurisdictions around the region that have been completed by consultants, very similar work, on par in terms of quality. You know, what our staff does internally is definitely on par with what the private consulting realm produces for cities and counties around metro Atlanta. So, I just want to let you all know that you've got a really great team, you know, working here in Cobb County Community Development. So, with that, I'll conclude and, and ask if there are any questions. So with that, I'll conclude and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate the presentation. Commissioners, any questions? All right, we look forward to a robust several months ahead, but this is good timing, I think, with some of the other things we have going on at the county. I think it'll tie in well with that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jason. And before the last act of our community development show today, I just wanted to add a couple of thoughts on the comp plan update. As Jason and Philip referenced, typically, we do annual updates to the plan, to the, you know, those annual code or plan amendments. We will not be doing those in 2022 because we'll be in the middle of this plan update, this full plan update. So just know that any changes that are needed to reflect this year's zoning decisions will be incorporated in that plan update rather than coming as a separate presentation. So that'll be a little bit different this year. And the other thing, I was anticipating the question to be asked, but the comp plan update is going to be working hand-in-hand, or at least from a timeframe standpoint, with the code updates. We have a lot of activity in community development. We have a lot of major planning initiatives that are underway. So we want to be very intentional, and it's going to be critical that we're very intentional in the engagement effort, that we can have those two pieces, those two projects, working together and side by side, but also to keep the public educated on what is the comp plan, what is the ordinance, how those work together, and just try not to give people public meeting fatigue if we can avoid it through the process. So it's going to be an exciting time, and we've got a lot of opportunity for input. But I think that's also where we're really going to look, to think outside of the box a little bit in light of multiple projects going on, as well as, of course, the ongoing pandemic. How do we engage people and provide other opportunities outside of, for public meetings? So with that, we're going to talk about short-term rentals a little bit. And I have with me today, I have Kathy Pickett, and everyone knows Kathy is our code enforcement division manager, and she's going to help me out a little bit here. But, you know, short-term rentals is something that we've talked about a good bit since I got here. We've had some stops and starts. And when we say short-term rental, of course, we're referring to rentals of residential spaces for 30 days or less. So you think about Airbnb, VRBO. I know personally, as I travel, a lot of times I look for condos or houses or what have you that I can rent for my stay. In 2020, we did have a draft code amendment that was put forward. Interestingly, the code amendments in 2020 came forward literally a couple of weeks before everything changed with the pandemic. You know, when we brought this forward initially, we had a lot of good public input. We were asked to take this back and work with a stakeholder committee to kind of flesh it out, talk it through a little bit more. And then everything kind of came to a grinding halt with pandemic. So we did, last year, late last year, each of the commissioners and the board members at the time gave us some members to involve in a stakeholder group, and we had a good online virtual meeting with those groups. I felt like the stakeholder group that we had was weighted pretty heavily towards people who are short-term rental owners, who are actively renting their properties and deriving benefit of the short-term rentals, and maybe not as much, certainly not much engagement from the general public who may see their neighborhoods are being impacted. So I think that's something we really need to be sensitive to as we move forward. And then the other thing that was sort of looming whenever we discussed this before was what is the General Assembly going to do? And there had been a lot of discussion about what are they going to do? There was a bill that had been put forward that would essentially tie the county's hands on the extent to which you all, as the board, could regulate short-term rentals. So we weren't sure if that was going to move forward. Well, it didn't. The legislation that did pass this year in the General Assembly with regard to short-term rentals was House Bill 317. And I think actually is a great benefit to us because what House Bill 317 does is it requires those platforms, the Airbnbs, VRBOs, and the various other platforms that are, you know, advertising and making short-term rentals available to collect the, all of the local taxes, hotel motel taxes, the state tourism fee, all of those things, so that from a taxation standpoint, they're on more equal footing with your other hotels, motels, and other lodging establishments. That bill went into effect July 1st, so, you know, as of right now, we have not received a check. We expect that, and those funds will start to be coming into the county over the next couple of months here. At this point, we can't even really ballpark what that might look like. If you open up and just search on Airbnb for rentals in Marietta, I mean, literally hundreds come up. And there are so many out there, and I think as we start to collect those hotel motel taxes, it's going to be really enlightening and informative about just the scope of how many are out there. And Brian Johnson actually sent a great article to me yesterday evening, and it came from the Georgia State Senate Research Office. And it spoke to short-term rentals, and it mentioned in this article that in 2020, Airbnb, so just one platform, Airbnb had as many as 2.3 million room nights in the state of Georgia in 2020. And on average, the average occupancy for Airbnb, just Airbnb properties, is estimated to be about 54%. So that tells you, this is something that's very widespread. There are a lot of them. Another stat that I thought was interesting in that article was that the Georgia Fiscal Research Center expects that by 2027, short-term rentals in the state of Georgia will more than double. So it's certainly a growing industry, growing industries. There's always good, bad, and ugly that comes with it. And for local governments to kind of wrap their heads and their hands around, how do we best leverage this to be a good asset and not something that's going to be a threat to the local character and the community? You know, that's something that certainly everybody right now is working through. So today, what I wanted to do is to, first of all, we're going to have Kathy come up here and talk about the issues that we're having right now with short-term rentals, the typical complaints that we hear, and the things that we can do under our current code to address some of those, as well as some of the challenges that, right now, we have in enforcement. From there, I was going to give just a very high-level overview, just hit the highlights of the code amendment that we put forward in 2020. And as I walk through that, I'll also share with you the concerns that were raised in the stakeholder group about that, specifically from the Short-Term Rental Owners Association of Georgia, was a great resource there and providing some good feedback in terms of just things that they've seen elsewhere and the things that may be challenging. And then from there, I'll talk to you a little bit about what some of the other jurisdictions are doing here in Georgia to regulate short-term rentals. And then from there, just look for direction from you all about, are you all interested in a code amendment coming forward in the 2022 package? And if so, you know, what are some key pieces that you would like to be sure are included? So I'd like Kathy to come on up here, and she's going to talk about, again, those common complaints that her office deals with. And I know these are also some that a lot of you here from your constituents can forward on to us.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairwoman and Commissioners. I just wanted to talk just briefly about, you know, the complaints that we're receiving in our office about short-term rental, and what we can and cannot do to try to assist the neighbors that are alleging these concerns against the properties that are being rented out. So I went back and did a little research. It looks like this, for code enforcement anyway, we started recognizing that there were short-term rentals in the communities around 2016. So this has been going on for quite a while. With anything, you know, we recognize that there are properties where, you know, we will never receive a complaint because these are, you know, pretty much not even recognized as being rentals. But we do have a few bad actors that come up every once in a while, and that really puts it on the neighborhood radars in communities that there are problems, you know, taking place. So primarily, the complaints that we're getting are about noise, litter, and parking. A lot of times, those are a reference to parties and large social gatherings that are happening at some of these rentals. With the parking, you know, they'll have a lot of party-goers coming in and driving multiple vehicles, and they'll start overflowing into the yard. And then once they've filled the yard full, then they start filling the streets full and blocking the neighbors' driveways, having loud music playing all night. And with all of that comes along, all the litter associated with the party the next day. As far as what code enforcement can do from our perspective on the private property, you know, we can't do anything about the actual use of the property because we don't, you know, have an ordinance in place to address that. However, we can address the parking in the yard. We can go back the next day when the neighbors call. And, you know, you can see the ruts in the yard, and it's very obvious when you've had too many vehicles parking in a yard. And we can issue a notice to the property owner. If it's been an ongoing complaint, we can actually issue a citation. And then the litter, you know, there's usually litter in the bushes, cans, bottles, cups. If the occupants were nice enough to bag everything up, they've usually got it at the street on Monday, and the trash service is coming on Thursday. And there's two full cans of trash and bags all over the, all over the ground, which, of course, is another violation. So the things that we can enforce, the litter, the parking, you know, those kind of things, we will do. We'll contact the property owner and let them know that a complaint's been received and, you know, move forward with issuing the notice of violation and let the owner know that they can be cited for the ordinance violations that we do have in place. Any complaints referenced to the noise or street parking or blocking of roadways, we do communicate with the neighbor that they need to contact the police department to handle those issues while they are taking place. We do oftentimes also try to connect neighbors with the property owner to let them, you know, be able to have some sort of firsthand response. A lot of the property owners are responsive. They don't realize that their properties are being rented for the purpose of a house party. There are some in the county over the last couple of years that have actually had house parties where there were charges to get into the party. There were tables rented by the pool, food service, bottles sold, you know, buckets of beer and things like that. So, you know, that kind of puts the property owner on notice to let them know what kind of activities are taking place on the property. So that's where we are now. As far as the challenges, it's just, you know, we don't proactively seek out these properties. We are contacted by the neighbors in the community. And, you know, we've been asked year after year after year now for something that can help these neighbors with the houses that continue to be a problem. That's pretty much it. You have any questions?
Any questions for Kathy, Commissioner?
It's good to see you.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
Okay, Jessica, you mentioned House Bill 317. Does it allow the local jurisdictions to be more restrictive?
It does not have anything in there, limitations or expansions of our authority as a local jurisdiction. It strictly deals with tax collection.
Oh, okay. So we would have to adopt our own ordinance to prohibit or restrict these locations. Okay. Can you send us a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am. I'll be glad to get you a copy of that and...
And the draft that we started with, I mean...
Yes.
And do we still have our committee?
Well, if you don't mind, I'd like to go, because I was going to hit the highlights of the draft. That was the next part of the presentation, so I'll hit the highlight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, that's okay. No, sorry. I'll be quick, though. But I will, I'll be glad to send out a copy of the draft that we had before, so that way you can all see it and refresher for those of you who have seen it, and for those of you who are new. I know that'll be helpful to give you some more perspective. But I was just going to hit the highlights of it today to kind of tell you.
Jessica, I'm sorry. I do have a question for Kathy, if I can. Kathy, can we revise the code amendments to be more specific to short-term rentals? To kind of address some of those issues that you talked about?
Right. I believe that a short-term rental code is going to be proposed that would specifically address the concerns.
That's what, excuse me, Commissioner, that's what the director's getting ready to share.
Okay, Jessica, sorry. Thank you, Kathy. If we have any more questions specific to code enforcement, once we get through them, we can certainly bring Kathy back up. But, so in 2020, we did propose a draft short-term rental ordinance. The purpose of that was really to establish standards for short-term rentals, to minimize the effects on the existing neighborhoods, and also preserve neighborhood character. And what's interesting, the complaints and the issues that you heard Kathy raise, a lot of them are things that we have codes for. We have a noise ordinance. We have codes about litter and parking and all those sorts of things. But, you know, whenever you're dealing with more of a transient occupant, that's where the enforcement gets a little bit more challenging. If we do an ordinance, of course, it would only be specific to unincorporated Cobb, but also it doesn't affect private covenants. And this is something that I think is important to note also. You know, we have a lot of neighborhoods who complain about short-term rentals, but if it's a neighborhood that does have covenants and an HOA in place already, they can also include things in their covenant right away that could limit short-term rentals in their own neighborhood. So again, we talked a little bit about what a short-term rental is, this 30 consecutive days or less. But the important thing here about the code that was proposed, and I think something that could help mitigate some of the issues, is having this short-term rental agent. And the short-term rental agent, a lot of times, the property owner is maybe not local, or maybe they're renting out their house in Marietta because they're in Europe for three weeks during the summer, and they want to make a little cash while they're there. So having a short-term rental agent, which is somebody that would be local and be available to contact right of way if there is an issue. So if it's getting too loud, to have someone there that is a representative of that property owner to address the issue, and that would also be held accountable for the behavior on that property. Or for instance, Kathy mentioned, the trash gets put out on the curb on Sunday, but it doesn't get picked up till Thursday, and in the meantime, you've got raccoons and everything else digging through it, just throwing it across the lawn. So that short-term rental agent, I think, is key to have a local contact that we, as the local government, the tenant, the occupant of the short-term rental, and also the neighbors would have handy that they could contact if there was an issue. Initially, as we had talked about it, we had talked about using the occupational tax certificate, the business license that we already have as the mechanism for registering the short-term rentals. It would be a separate occupation tax certificate for each short-term rental. And that was one thing that was raised as a concern in our stakeholder group, and we do still have access to them. And I'm sure that they would certainly be glad to continue working on this as we move it forward. But that was something that was raised as a concern. A lot of local jurisdictions that are currently regulating short-term rentals rather than doing it through the occupation tax certificate or the business license, they have a short-term rental certificate. So it's just a different kind of license. That's certainly something that we could look at doing. We, as we were working through this, had some limitations in terms of the permits and the licenses and what have you that we could produce through our current software. But we are in the implementation stages of updating our software, so I think we'll have a lot more options in terms of exactly what does that piece of paper look like and how we put that forth. So the application, it would require contact information for the owner of record. Then, very important, the 24-hour contact information, the number of location of parking spaces, ensuring that all of the county's parking requirements can be met. They would still have to meet the same parking codes as any other residential property. You can't park on the grass. You have to be on a hardened surface. There's got to be adequate parking. So that would need to be on there, just an agreement, an affidavit that would say that, you know, they're going to do their best to not disrupt the neighborhood, to not pose a threat to the quiet enjoyment of the neighboring properties. And then, of course, that we would also have them notify all of the adjacent property owners, so they would be aware that this property is being used in such a way. And that was another thing that was raised as a concern, well, privacy issues. But one of the biggest concerns that we hear, and I know you all hear from neighbors, is if there's a property being used as a short-term rental, we don't know who's staying there. And, you know, certainly, I know, in this world, a lot of people don't know their neighbors, but it's changing hands every few days, so it's even more than typically what we deal with. So I think that is important, that the adjacent property owner should be notified and should be aware. Oh, there we go. They would also need to have their short-term rental agent lined up. If the agent were to change, that they would have to notify the county in timely fashion. Another important thing here was that that agent must be available to appear on the premises, on the site, within an hour of a complaint being raised. So within an hour of getting that call that there's a party over here and it's getting loud, that people are parking all over the yard, you know, whatever the issue is, they would need to be there right away to handle it and get that situation corrected. They would also be the ones to receive and accept service of any violation, and also just monitoring the short-term rental for... just monitoring the short-term rental for compliance with the code, again, that local person who is the eyes and ears on the ground close by. The other conditions, though, standard conditions, just they would be permitted in the residential zoning districts and only in structures that have a valid certificate of occupancy. And that seems like a no-brainer, but people try to use an RV in their backyard as a short-term rental, you can't do that. You know, if you're going to have a short-term rental, it needs to be an actual structure, an actual building that has a certificate of occupancy for residential occupation. The parking would have to be off-street parking, again, just in accordance with the zoning code for residential zonings. All the same requirements, minimum of two parking spaces per dwelling unit, so that's no different than it would be for any other residential use in the county. Life safety and sanitation, again, they would have to meet all of the requirements that any other residential use in the county would have to meet. Another thing that was raised as a concern by our stakeholder group was occupancy, and we've got it limited to one adult per 390 square feet, as shown on the county tax records. That is in line with our single-family occupancy, it's in line with our current code. Most places that regulate short-term rentals, they limit occupancy to two adults per bedroom plus two additional adults. We, at this point, are proposing to keep it in line with the 390 square feet that we already require. They have to meet all building fire, health, and sanitation codes. Any advertising that they did would have to include the maximum occupancy, this place is for no more than six people, or whatever that number is, the maximum number of vehicles allowed, and also the county's provisions regarding noise. So all that would need to be advertised on the platform for the short-term rental. Again, enforcement, that agent, that short-term rental agent is really our eyes and ears on the ground, that first point of contact. They can also, of course, provide complaints to code enforcement, but going through that agent's going to help us to be sure that we can get more immediate addressing of the situation at hand. Of course, code enforcement will handle this and handle the enforcement. There are fines for violation, there are penalties, just like there would be for any other code violation in the county. So first violation within 12 months would be $500 fine, second within 12 months, $750, and then the third would be $1,000. There was also some concern that the fines were a little steep, but I'll tell you, it's very much in line with what the other jurisdictions in the state are doing. It's 500, $750, $1,000. Then, of course, the taxes. We already mentioned 317 requires the collection of hotel motel taxes, tourism fees, so all of those taxes and fees that are related to lodging would certainly be collected here, and really, again, to put the short-term rentals more in line with the hotels and motels and other lodging facilities. And I've sort of walked through these stakeholder concerns already, so I won't touch on those again, but just a few things. Hall County, and, you know, Hall County was sort of the pioneer, I guess, in the greater Atlanta region on the short-term rental ordinances, and so as you look at a lot of codes, and even our code is very much modeled on the code that Hall County did. There was actually a draft of our code done before I started here in 2019, so it was already there and had already been worked up, and then Hall County modified their code, and so modified it again, but as you'll see, many of the codes around here very much reflect that in terms of what they do, with the most important thing being having a point of contact that we can get ahold of to address immediate situations. City of Savannah's code is pretty tight. I think one thing that's different, as you see here, their violations are the same. They require two hours for the agent to respond. They do use their occupation tax certificate as a mechanism for licensing, but I think the thing that's kind of different here is that they actually cap the number of short-term rentals that could be in any ward. So the city has broken up into wards, and they say, well, you can only have 10 in this ward, or it's just a, you know, number I'm throwing out there as an example. So once they reach that cap of short-term rentals in that geographic area, nobody else can get a permit, and there's actually a waiting list to get a new permit. So that might be something that you all may be interested in exploring, if we have some key areas, like for instance, maybe the area around the Battery, or some of those more touristy areas that perhaps it's a better fit, and having more limitations on some of the areas that maybe it's not quite the same. For South County, they do theirs through a conditional use permit, and they're very strict up there, it's only on agriculturally and agricultural residentially zoned properties, so certainly an effort there to limit short-term rentals. Dawson County has an administrative permit and is annually issued, so similar to if we were going to do a short-term certificate or to do an occupation tax. City of Woodstock pretty recently adopted a code, again, it's very similar to what you see in Savannah and to what we had been discussing with regards to having the agent, taxes, and violations. Atlanta is one of the newer ones, they, there was a lot of discussion about this, and interestingly, they've adopted their code, but it's not actually really effective until next March. But they, you know, they do require notification of the adjacent property owners in Atlanta, they do require a short-term rental agent. One thing that they are putting together in Atlanta is a public intake portal, and I think this might be something we could look at, too. You know, having that portal that's available for the public to reach out with questions or to issue, to raise complaints, to raise concerns, that they'll know, how do we get in touch with somebody? And then again, taxation. Something else that Atlanta has recently done, Kathy mentioned the party houses, these houses where people, they're having, these are commercial, you know, these are business enterprises, you pay, you pay your fee to come into the party, you buy your drinks, whatever. In those cases, Atlanta has just also adopted a party house ordinance that's more specific to that versus people who are just coming to stay for the weekend with their family in someone's home. And it really does limit the party houses to mixed-use and commercial zoning districts, and not within 150 feet of most of your residential zone districts, so to further lessen the impact of those rentals on the neighborhoods. So from there, I'm glad to take questions, talk about next steps. You know, we do have the code amendment process that we're kicking off this fall, so I think I'll be glad, Commissioner, to send out the draft that we currently have, and I would love any feedback that you all have. If you want to take some time and look at it, you can email me comments, but if there are other things that maybe you've heard here or that you've seen other places doing that you'd like for us to take a look at and explore as we bring this forward, and also if there's just not, I don't think this is the case, but if there's not an interest in bringing a code amendment, I need to know that, too, but... Any questions?
Any questions?
I've just shared my policy concern or perception of a conflict with how we would facilitate this business use to permit transient residency in a community, but yet we have very strict guidelines on unrelated persons being able to live with the resident. And I think there needs to be some reconciliation, because you would think if someone is actually living with the resident, that the resident would be able to better monitor someone's behavior in their household versus having someone coming in who is not associated with the resident, and that being facilitated much more easily by this code, so I don't know how we do that, but it's still a continuing concern I have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, any other questions? Commissioner?
I'm sure I'll follow...
Yes.
...what you're saying, but...
I can clarify, you want me to clarify, or...
Yeah, but prior to COVID, this was an issue throughout the county. We haven't heard as much lately, but, you know, it's just, it does impact the neighborhoods, especially in subdivisions with these all-night parties and 200 cars, and it's just, I'd like to see some type of ordinance as far as, you know, the draft, and maybe tweak that a little bit and see. One of the, when you had the fines for the first, second, and third violation, after that, is their business license revoked, or do they get a hearing, special cause hearing like we do for other cases?
All right, we'll need to go back and look at how we handle that, and of course, in line with, you know, when we talked about this before, this was going to be incorporated into Chapter 134 zoning, but as we've talked about this further, this is a better fit, really, in the business license, the licensing code section, so we want to be sure that the policy, the penalties, and the enforcement are in line with that, so, you know, there's got to be at some point that you get shut down.
Thank you. And just to respond, Commissioner, when we hear land use permit cases for zoning, we tend not to be generous with allowing unrelated persons to live together. However, my experience with seeing short-term rentals in my neighborhood, there are people you don't know constantly coming in your community, five, I mean, I've seen just, I've seen some bad examples of it, and so if we permit this, it's very difficult to see how we permit a continuing transient population within a residential community, but would not permit students to live in a home or unrelated persons. I think one time we had someone who was a caregiver, it was just odd circumstances, but where people were unrelated, you know. I just have a very difficult time allowing a continual unknown transient population in a residency, but for us to take a hard-line stance against allowing unrelated people who would stay in a community for a longer duration of time. Because to me, the latter population would be a more stable population over time, versus what I've seen with the home that I used to see, you know, along my street, they had continuing people in there we did not know, different cars, and one of them, they were bringing all, it was just, it was very strange traffic just coming in and out of this short-term rental home.
Yeah, Commissioner?
Yeah, but what you're explaining is exactly why we need a short-term rental code, because right now, because we have a code restricting more than one unrelated person residing in a home, we can have code enforcement go out, write a citation, and then we can take action against that individual. With short-term rentals, because we don't have anything on our codes, this will continue to go on. We will continue to have people going in and renting homes and, you know, being a nuisance to the neighborhood, and it's going to be difficult to enforce. So that's, that's one of the reasons, I think, you know, you're bringing forward short-term rentals, it's just because of the number of complaints that we've had across the districts to this. And while I wasn't on the board at the time, Commissioner Burrell, I know you were, the whole reason we brought up the no more than one unrelated person living, or two unrelated, thank you, was because of issues we had in Pine Tree Country Club with rentals to college students. So there's a history and a pattern of how we've gotten here.
I'll respond, I definitely agree with you. I do believe we need a code, but I would just, again, I have a difficult time reconciling our stance with a more stable population staying in a property, and we've just, as a board, it's been our policy position for the time I've been there to not facilitate that. I can also say I was a very avid community advocate when the policy change was made to two persons, and there were some very inflammatory things beyond the Pine Tree Country Club that were fueling the consideration of that. That may be part of the reason, but unfortunately, you know, even if you look at some of the policy basis behind it, I think these are conversations that we don't necessarily need to have here today, but certainly the climate for how people use, how people live has changed over time.
And Chair, I think as we move through the code update, those types of policy discussions, that'll be the right time to have those, to look at it and see if that's still the policy of the board, and still the direction, and, you know, certainly as we crack open those zoning codes, we can continue having those broader policy discussions.
Question for Jessica. So what measures do we have in place to monitor which homes are short-term rentals? Because everybody's not going to be compliant and notify us.
Right now, there's nothing, you know, because we don't have a code, so if we did have the short-term ordinance, short-term rental ordinance in place and we're requiring registration, I would envision that we would handle that situation just like we would any other business that's operating illegally without proper registration through the county. You know, we have our business license compliance officials who are out there on a regular basis finding businesses that are not in good standing on their business license registration, so I would expect that this would be something we would need to handle in a similar fashion.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate your presentation, appreciate the agency's presentation today. Again, good to see you, Kathy, and likewise, Philip, I haven't seen you in some time as well. And I know you will be a busy team over the next nine to 12 months, so just...
All good things, so, thank you all.
Very good, thank you. We do have a, another work session, which will be a budget presentation. I would just ask that we take about a 10-minute break and come back for that at 3:25. Thank you.